Call the order, the September 26th Policy Subcommittee Meeting of the Lynn School Committee. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, so tonight, our task is to start to get through Policy J and analyze that policy and just kind of get it up to date. So, Ms. Presser, if you could kind of, and we'd like to welcome Mr. Dorothy Presser from the MASC to help us out. Those of you that have been following along have familiarity with her work. So, Ms. Presser, let's get started. JA, Student Policy Goals.
One preface, because this has been, J in particular, has been very complicated work. So, when we started in 2019, this whole policy project, the objective was that once we finished the review of the entire manual, Lynn would start using MASC's hosting service for the policy manual, which would mean that all the policies would be in a Word format, keyword searchable, hyperlinks to cross-references and legal references. And when there was a change in policy, probably Mary would send us the change in policy and we would take care of keeping the manual updated.
Okay.
And I preface that because part of the reason that J has been complicated, part of the reason is because we've done it in bits and pieces over time.
Yep.
And part of it is sort of the complication of the policy manual now, every section being one long PDF document. So, it makes it hard for the administration when there's one policy change to change the policy manual.
Okay.
So, that's, that has contributed a little bit to the complication of this process, but...
Okay.
So, and then just ask your patience as we go through some of this, in part because we have done J in bits and pieces so far. So, now we're trying to get it totally cleaned up.
Correct.
And I think once, once we have done our work, and I believe that it's totally cleaned up, I'm hoping that Attorney Gala will take another look at it and say, yes, this agrees with what I believe, I believe it should be too.
Right. I think that's a great plan.
Yeah.
Just to cover our bases. So, but thank you for that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, last, yeah, last time, we took like a middle section because I wasn't ready to deal with the beginning. So, now we sort of have the beginning and the end minus the middle. Starting with JA, the student policy goals, often the first policy in a section is the goals for the section. This one is a Lynn policy only. Keeping it or not is totally at your discretion.
I kind of feel like if it's something we can keep, we probably should. It says that we should, if we are to retain it, just update the pronouns, which I seems like reasonable to me.
Yep.
So, why don't we take a look? I think the pronouns that would need to be updated.
Yep, I can take care of that.
Okay.
You don't need to tell me.
All right, so we'll hold on to, all right, so we'll hold on to JA, update the pronouns. Sounds good. All right, thank you.
I just wanted to point out that I would be making changes to the words.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
So, JAE is really just the state regulations. We've been taking those out in other places.
Yep, I agree. So, we should probably remove JAE. Again, it just kind of states the regulations of the state. Thank you.
So, JB, equal educational opportunities. There's a Lynn version and an MASC version. The MASC version was recently updated to update the list of protected classes. It also does not contain what is just a quote from statute.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's one we should, MASC version of it, it's more fitting.
So, JBA, the policy on, wait a second, I lost yours. Yeah, JBA, the policy, I don't think it's in your...
We have the red.
Yeah, it'd be in the red version, right? It's in the red version. That was recently updated in 2023. So, I think we're, we're just ready to say it's set.
It's set. So, that's, yeah, when Policy J goes forward, that will be part of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, in the policy analysis that I gave you, JBAB and JBAC, I realized later had been recoded in your packet as JICK.
Okay.
So, skip over JBAB and JBAC for now.
For now, okay.
And we'll hit them when we get to JICK.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. JICK, you said?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, JBB, educational equity. This is an MASC policy only. JB covers equal opportunities and JBB covers equity in the delivery of educational programs. So, even though they both have an equity, they're looking at it through a slightly different lens.
Okay.
So, the direction you go is up to you. But just in case it's puzzling why there's two policies.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I, I think if it's in the MS, MASC manual, it's not procedure, it would benefit it to have it in ours.
I agree. Yeah.
Okay, so keep JBB. Okay.
JC, attendance areas. It looked to me like the Lynn version had been written so it was specific and fit Lynn more than the MASC version. The only thing I saw is the Lynn version did refer to town. You might want to change that to city.
Change that to city, right, right.
I agree.
Yep, agree. So, keep JC, Lynn version, right?
Yep. Changing town to city.
Changing town to city, correct.
JCA, this one, assignment of, of students to schools was revised in about a year ago.
Correct.
So, assuming it's still.
Yeah, I remember Attorney Gala coming before us for that one. So, JCA, we're good.
Just let me make a note here. JD, it's not a policy. Why do we take it out?
Yep.
Agreed. Yep, that would be more, it seems like it's just stating legal references. Is that what's happening in that one? Yeah.
Yes.
So, JE, in the, you probably have it in your red line version as already crossed out. It's one that we did discuss before and it was recommended by the Policy Subcommittee to be rescinded.
Okay. I believe I do recall that. Then JE.
So, and JER, and JE, I guess I have R, but it's E. Same thing.
Yep.
That it's...
We had already rescinded that at one point, right?
And JER as well.
Okay.
JER looks like it's either a summary or a quote from regulations. JEB, I think is what, part, JEB. So, there's kind of three JEBs, I think, in the answer.
Yeah, I know.
I was confused, I have to be honest.
Entrance age maximum, yeah, yeah.
So, there's, the Lynn version, which really is more procedure, right? It's how do you show the age of someone?
Right.
The MASC policy talks about how do you, you know, what is the entrance age at various levels. But then Mary found the letter, the memo that she passed, which actually does give ages. So, I'm not quite sure where you want to go with this one.
Yeah, all right. One of the deputy superintendents could kind of chime in on this one.
Well, so, JEB was more about the age in which you could start.
Right, right, right.
Because prior to this policy, it wasn't a September 1st date. It was a January date and it threw everything off consistently. It would throw things off. So...
I'm a product of that. I was for kindergarten.
Whereas I feel like... Yeah, they're, it's, they're very confusing because I feel like the JEB entrance age is the, it is the procedure of what you have to show to prove birth, you know, the date of birth.
The Lynn version, yeah.
Yeah, and then the MASC version is more setting the dates, right? But it's not, it's not quite as detailed as...
Not quite.
As the, the memo.
But the MASC, the MASC version does not address pre-K.
Right.
It does not.
And we do have pre-K.
Right.
So, I mean, you could, we could take the MASC version and add the, the date, the pre-K.
Yeah.
And as well as the early childhood?
So, the early childhood program, it's referring to the three-year-olds who we typically get through early intervention, which is actually 2.9 years old that we can take them in. I know it says three years of age, but it's, it's technically, it's 2.9. So, that's why it, it's early childhood and then pre-K. Pre-K is straight four-year-olds.
So, if I take the MASC version, "In an attempt to permit children to enter school at a time most appropriate for them individually, the school committee establishes the following policy on entrance age." And then I jump down to early childhood, 2.9, honor before December 1st, pre-kindergarten 4, honor before December 1st.
September or December?
September.
Did I say December?
You said December, yes.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm looking at the word September.
Okay.
Kindergarten 5, honor before, grade 1, 6, honor before. And do you want to... Then the MASC one has the admission of children whose birthdays fall before September 1st solely at the school's discretion. Do you want to not, you want to just?
Not.
Not.
We don't, yeah. We typically try and stay away from that.
Yeah.
Okay, so remove that completely?
Yeah. And then, "Initial admission to the first grade will involve consideration of both chronological age and readiness of the children to do work." That would be someone coming who's been like to a private kindergarten and might have been able to start before they were that age or...
That's all I'm thinking of it, but...
The only, I know that Dr. Alvarez has been very clear. It's about age appropriateness.
And we'll knock that out too. Okay, and just have the, and just have the list of ages.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, just so we're clear, get rid of the middle part, admission of children, September solely at the school's discretion, get rid of number 2, and then just do early childhood, 2.9 by September 1st, pre-K, four years old by September 1st? And then K?
5.
5 by September 1st.
And grade 1, 6.
And grade 1, 6. Okay, so we just list the grades. Thank you.
Excellent.
Mrs. Jules, you good? You get that? You good?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
JEB.
We did that one.
You just did.
We had done, correct.
Good on that one.
Yep.
JF, school admissions, again, look quite tailored to the district. So, as long as it is current, then it should just stay as it is.
Yeah, one question. There's nothing about the LTVI Discovery Academy in it.
No.
And it talks about PIC, not Welcome Center.
Not Welcome, yeah, so...
Same thing about JFAA. There's nothing about the Discovery Academy in that one.
So, JF, school admissions. Should we table that one and have people kind of look at it and update it? Okay, all right.
Because the transfer section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that we have looked and made adjustments to that. And so, I would want to make sure that Charlie is part of looking at that to be sure that it's reflecting what we want.
Okay. So, table JF?
So, just usually in my notes, I put why we tabled it. So, if it's a while till we go back, we remember.
To have compliance officer review the within-system transfers and the admissions policy as a whole. And to update some of the programs.
Yeah, update programs, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you. So, E1 and E2 are both quotes from regulations that I think.
Yeah. We okay with that? Okay, so, rescind JF-E-1 and JF-E-2.
So, JFA, registration procedures, looks like procedures? Can be removed?
So, just a point of clarification, the registration procedures are listed or given to families in a website or?
On the website.
It's on the website? Okay, thank you. All right. Just so we know where we're going if we're getting rid of that. Okay. So, this is a biggie. People should know.
JFAA, I'm going to make sure I get the most updated policy.
Okay, so I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the thought would be to table this one as well?
Well, if we indeed did vote it in the spring of '22, then that would be the most current.
That would be the most current version, right? So, I think the best course of action was just kind of table the discussion, kind of wait and see what, or unless Mary has that information for us now. Okay. Mary, would you like her to get that if we can find it?
We already have another J that we just tabled. So, I don't think, like if we didn't table anything else, I'd say, yes, go get it. But since we've already tabled something else...
Yeah, that was sort of my thought as well, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to table JFAA for now and just make sure we have the most recent version before we discuss it. Okay.
So, JFABC, admission of transfer students, is an MASC policy only. It came into existence when charter schools were first came into existence. And I think the, there was a lot of, pressure might be the right word, from the state to make sure that should students return from a charter school, they were treated equitably.
Okay.
So, you don't have it right now. I think it's less of an issue than it probably was a decade or so ago. So, you know, it, and if you, you know, you have other policies that are pretty clear on transfer procedures, so you probably don't need it.
Okay. Member Magnolia, you good with?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have an issue with adopting it or not adopting it. I was, my question was whether or not it was going to be covered in other...
Yes.
Transfers. So, wait, I'm, I need to find the one that I was looking at that I thought.
It might be there as well.
Sorry.
This is specifically about charter schools?
Correct.
Yes.
It's very specific.
Yeah, it's an MASC only right now.
We follow the same procedure for them that we do for anyone.
Yeah.
You know, they provide their transcripts or their report card, their, you know, they get placed by age.
I guess my, my sense is I don't think we need it specific to charter schools, especially as it would be covered under other transfers.
Yeah, that, that would be my feeling.
That was my feeling on it as well. I feel like as long as we're covering it.
There are other smaller districts that don't have as specific a policy on transfers as you do.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it was agreed to take it out?
Yes, JFABC will be, oh.
Well, we never had it. It was only in MASC.
We never had it. We won't be adding it. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
So, it's just an MASC policy. It was never in the Lynn policy manual.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
So, JFABD looks again like it was, is pretty well tailored to Lynn. The only thing I noticed was on number 6, school nutrition program. I don't know if, if you want to not have that or adjust it, given that school lunch is...
Is free now, yeah. I'm fine with that. My only thought would be if, you know, for whatever reason, the legislators decide to not do that anymore, would, would be, be covered still.
Yeah, so we, we updated other policies specific to school lunches to up, to make them comply with the fact that it's now free. So, we could either take this out entirely or I had written down to some sample language that says homeless students will benefit from the feet, free meals that all other students in the district do. You know, I, I think we could also just completely take it out.
Yeah.
Because the other meals policy covers them.
Correct, correct.
So, it was one thing when the free meals were based on like zip code and number of people who qualify. But now that they're just free for everyone, we probably don't need the policy.
No, probably not. No, probably not.
So, do you want to just take it out?
I'm fine with that. Any other thoughts? Again, my only concern would be if we ever did get to a point where...
We'd have to change a lot of policies.
We'd have to change a lot of our policies. So, this would be part of it, but yeah. Uh, no, no, no.
Just number 6.
Six, yeah. Just JA, Jeff, excuse me, JFABD, section 6, yeah.
And then renumber 7 and 8.
Right.
It also, it also refers to the Welcome Center as the parent information center, which I don't know if you want to make that.
Oh, thank you for catching that. Yes, we will need to fix that.
I can do that. Where, can you just tell me where you're looking?
I noticed it first on number 1 designation of homeless.
Ah, okay. So, that is now the Welcome Center?
Welcome Center, yeah.
Correct, that's now the Welcome Center. Thank you for catching that. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? People are turned about there? Okay, all right.
JFABD, did I, oh, sorry. That's the same one.
Right.
Okay. JFABE, the educational opportunities for military children. There, there's more detail in the Lynn version than the MASC version, but it was just recently updated. So, well, I guess it's getting close to four years now, but still.
Yeah, it's fairly recent.
Fairly recent. So, I'm sort of assuming maybe you just want to leave it as it is?
That's my inclination.
That's my thought. I wrote keep on my notes. So, yeah, I'm thinking we just keep on, keep that as is.
I will, in all these educational opportunities ones, I'll check through and make sure that I don't see parent information center.
Okay.
And change it if I do.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
JFABF, students in foster care. Again, more detail in the MASC version, but it looks like it was considered at the same time as the one we just looked at. So, I'm assuming you also want to leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree.
I agree.
So, keep JFABF Lynn version.
JFBB, I did not see a school choice policy for Lynn.
We vote.
You vote every year.
Yep.
I think it's helpful to have a policy that says, I mean, even as a reminder to make sure you vote every year.
Yeah.
Because it is an opt-out, not an opt-in. If you don't vote, you're automatically school choice.
Okay.
So, that's what JFBB1 is?
Yeah, so we have two versions, right? You pick the one that fits the district.
Yes. So, I, I was going to advocate for JFBB1 since that's the opt.
Yeah, and it'll get coded JFBB.
Yes.
It's just, you know.
Get rid of the 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, because JFBB...
Is if you participate.
Right.
The other one says not to admit.
Not to admit, right.
So, we never know what, when we're doing a manual review, which a district is. So, we say, here, pick the right one.
Right, right. So, it seems like JFBB1 is the one we need to go with.
Perfect.
But then it would be in the new manual as JFBB.
Correct. It would be recoded without the 1. Correct.
So, JFC, student withdrawal from school seemed to really not be withdrawal, but transfer. And it also appeared to be procedural and covered in school admissions. So, I think it's one to rescind.
Yes, I agree.
So, remove J...
JFC.
JFC, correct. Thank you. Remove JFC. All right.
JFC-R is a direct quote from the law. So, I think that you don't need it.
Agreed. So, remove JFC-R.
So, JG, assignment of students to classes. We discussed promotion and retention of students and had a policy IKE in section I, which seems to me it's covering the same material. So, I would nix this one and keep the IKE.
Yeah, I agree. When I was going through this, I looked at IKE too, and I think it does cover what we needed too. So, remove JG.
And GH is another one, I believe, that was considered before and approved by the school committee.
Yep.
In '19, yep. So, we'd keep that.
Attendance of...
GH.
I'm sorry. GH, student absences and excuses.
Yeah.
All right. I have concerns.
Okay.
About this policy.
All right.
And been running some data and can ask if we can table this.
Sure.
And bring you some data about this policy impacting our students and our attendance.
Okay, I would, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think data-driven decisions are always the way to go. So, yeah, I'm all for that. Okay with that, Member Magnolia?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we're going to table GH.
If I remember, this was something that Superintendent taught while I was pretty, wanted to make sure of it.
Yeah, yeah. It looks like it was last updated in '19, but...
Yep.
All right, so anyway, table GH and Deputy Superintendent Goris will come back with some data to help us kind of go through that.
That impacts the following JH.
Okay.
And JHB.
Well, actually, I think that JHA slash JH, JH slash JHA slash JHB are, should all be rescinded because they're all going to be covered in JH.
Yeah, if we do JH properly, those will all be covered there, yeah. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so rescind JH, JHA, JHB.
And JHR is again a quote from regulations.
Be removed.
Think it can go.
Okay, so JS, JH-R removed.
And then J, J, even though we had JH slash slash slash, JH, we also had JHB, which I think should also be removed and it would be covered under JH.
Okay, again, so if JH is done properly, JHB will be part of that. So, we remove JHB. Okay.
So, JHD, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. This, this talks about why a student, no wonder I'm having trouble with this, why a student may not be eligible to attend the Lynn public schools. So, or why a student may not be able to attend in a particular district, but they live someplace else and you don't have school choice or whatever. So, it's not, it doesn't, it's not covering attendance. It's covering the ability to attend your district schools.
Okay.
And it, it's sort of the flip of all the, like the foster and homeless and military, like you have a right to attend here under these circumstances. It's why you don't have a right to attend.
Okay.
So, it's an MASC policy. Only the direction that you go is, is up to you.
Okay. So, we would be adding this to our Lynn... So we would be adding this to our LIN policy manual, should we accept it? It's not there right now.
Correct.
Just so I'm clear, okay.
So my question was whether the admissions policy covered this already, the one that we just did. Hold on, I'm going to get that.
Yeah, it's good. So it was J F, it looks like we decided to table that. A while ago.
I was thinking of the one that.
The entrance admissions?
Yes.
Entrance admissions, okay.
The entrance admission, I think, was more.
Just age, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe it does need to be in there.
I recommend that it is.
Yeah.
Here.
I agree. I think it's uh important that people see, you know, the other side of it as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so add. You okay with that, remember?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Add J H D from the M A S C, okay.
Just has a sticky note to make sure, that's all.
So it looked J I, student rights and responsibilities. Um, it looks to me like J, the LIN version of J I um was just a quote from the Mass General Law. And the M A S C version sort of summarizes student rights, but gives the other side of you have a right, but you have a responsibility. So um, again, I I would not recommend having the LIN policy that's just strictly a quote.
Yeah.
Um, but if you want to have a policy, you might want to.
To go with the M A S C version.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, I think the deputy, you guys good with that? Okay, because that's probably one that's going to affect your lives, so we want to make sure you guys are good with that. Yeah. So J I, uh, the M A S C version will be accepted, okay?
So J I A is another one that I believe that we have already dealt with. By using the M A S C version of J I C. The M A S C version lays out the notifications and the processes defined in law and regulation on disciplinary hearings for suspensions and expulsions. And um I just I just think we already dealt with this and that was the decision.
I do remember talking about J I C, and that will come up. It comes up in just a moment again, so um would it be okay if we held on to it for now, and then once we get to J I C, talk about that a little?
Yep.
Okay, we can talk, okay. So I'm going to write a little note to myself. J I A when we get to J I C. So as of right now, we'll hold on to it. Once we figure out J I C, we'll make a decision on that. Is is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so J I A A looked to me like it was just a summary of J I A.
Yep, I wrote my note, same thing, yep.
So remove that.
So remove J I A A, right.
Um, J I triple A. I don't think you want to touch.
Yep.
Yep, we want to leave that.
J I B, student involvement and decision making. The 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 first three paragraphs of match of the two policies. The student advisory committee section is different.
Correct.
So though you're, it's at your discretion.
Okay.
So I had a question about this because in my last M A S C newsletter, it says the school committee is required by law to meet every other month with the student advisory committee during the months that school is in session. One of the things that is different between these two is the omission of that by law they are required to meet.
I wrote that myself. The LIN version doesn't have that.
And different districts handle that differently.
Okay.
Some districts um have the report from the student representative is considered the meeting with the student advisory committee, as that person is a representative of the student advisory committee. Some meet, some have a sub, you know, liaison or someone that meets. Um, so that's why I kind of said it's at your discretion, because yes, you should have uh some contact with your students.
Absolutely, yeah.
But um, the way that happens tends to vary from place to place.
So right now, we do have the student representative, one from each school who does I don't know, two or three meetings each. I don't know if that student is the representative of a group at the school, I just don't know. I do know that Dr. Alvarez, uh, upon beginning, and Lynn has said multiple times that she wants to have a student advisory council that she will meet with. And that maybe students of that council from each school could be the representatives, and then that, to me, meets, I feel, what this is saying.
Yep, yep.
But until that happens, we should follow what we weren't, you know, have been doing until that is actually comes to fruition.
Okay.
I asked
Go ahead, Deputy Superintendent.
The secondary schools to send me their student government council makeup timeline for elections and um who their um staff member advisor is for that group. So with the intent that the superintendent is looking to have monthly meetings with them.
Right, right.
I should have a little bit more information. I don't know if the representatives from each of the schools were voted by their students or um nominated by leadership at the schools.
Okay. So it sounds like maybe this is one we should table until we get a little more information on it, but because if we're not.
Well, the law is the law, I mean.
But we need to make sure that we're, well. Right.
Yeah.
So adopt. I guess my thought then, let me change my thought. Adopt, my thought would be then adopt J I B, the M A S C version. And we need to make sure that we're abiding by that. Does that?
I, yeah, I mean, I think so, so as required by state law, the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session with the student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by the high school student body. The chair of the student advisory committee shall be an ex officio nonvoting member of the school committee, without the right to attend executive sessions, blah, blah, blah. That last sentence is what, if it's not required by law, I would take out. Because the first bit is the law requirement, the second bit is what we haven't determined if we want to do or not. Is that my?
Double check the law. I believe an ex officio member of.
That's sort of my thought.
No, not the ex officio, but that that person be from the student advisory committee, I think that's.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
That's the part that we'll still have that ex officio member. It will just not necessarily be from, or we could just take that phrase out. So just, you know, the student member shall be an ex officio nonvoting member of the school committee and not have it be connected with the student advisory council.
Or there shall be a student ex officio nonvoting member.
Okay, that's fine, yep.
Yes, I think that's probably the best way to word it.
Yep.
Which we have.
Yes.
Yep.
Just the the sentence would be there shall be an ex officio nonvoting member of this, a student, there shall be a student.
A student ex officio nonvoting member of the school committee.
Let me try that again. There shall be a student ex officio nonvoting member of the school committee.
Correct.
Et cetera.
Yes.
And then we want to keep that last part without the right to attend the exam, okay.
Yeah, so it just, it just removes the the chair of the student advisory committee, so that way it could be anyone.
Any student.
It could be a student that we.
Sometimes, I mean, some, in some places, it gets rotated.
Yeah.
I think it's it's always good to at least have that person be like a two-year rotation for consistency.
Right.
The only thing is, is historically, I think we've always used seniors, haven't we?
Yeah.
If if we then shifted it to juniors and it's a two-year rotation, then that would make sense.
Yeah. It's just like, you have more skin in the game.
Yeah.
Right, because think about it, three meetings, what do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Senior is like, senioritis is a real thing.
Real thing.
To my mind, as long as the policy codifies the student representative, then the procedure of who it is and that kind of thing can be, we can figure that out, but I it it just, it makes me a little uncomfortable to not have the law part in there. I think especially because when I got this, I was like, oh, my gosh, I've never done this. I want to make sure we're doing this.
Right, right. So then my next question would be, is having um Superintendent Alvarez meet with the students, does that meet our obligation? Okay, so we're still going to need to figure out.
Committee.
Yeah.
The school committee, right, so we're still going to figure out um
Yeah.
Once we get that schedule.
Right.
We'll put meeting laws and things of that nature, we're going to have to figure out a schedule.
Yes.
Amongst us.
I think that'll be exciting for them.
Yeah, it's exciting for me, yeah, that's actually, yeah, something I'd really look forward to. All right.
So do you have it, Mary, what we're doing?
Yes, I do.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
So look forward to hearing more about that, all right. It was a lot there, Mary, thank you.
Now we're at J I C, we can pull out J I A.
All right, so again, just so we're clear, we're keeping, okay, we're good, Mary's got it, so we're good.
Yeah.
We don't need to be clear. Don't overdo it, all right.
Okay, so in in J I C, you want to be looking at the M A S C version.
This one is long.
This is a long one.
And this is what I believe the decision had been made to use rather than J I A.
Yes, so the redlined version was the LIN version, and the red, but not redline, is the M A S C version, am I?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's what I was assuming when I was reading it.
The school committee, and we approved the M A S C version, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's that's what my notes indicate.
I believe, I do recall doing that as well. So make sure I have it in front of me here. This is the one our packet's so thick for.
I know.
Here we go. That's not it. So I guess as we flip through our pages here, does that cover, does it all cover J I A as well? Like, are we covered with J I A, with J I C if we were to eliminate J I C?
You are.
Now that we're looking at it, okay.
Are well covered.
Well covered, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
I, can you point to me, Dorothy, please, um, where the due process rights are in this? Because that's the, I was just looking for that phrase and I didn't.
I mean, I think essentially the whole policy is the due process.
Okay, then that's all I need to know, thank you.
Okay, so with all that being said, J I C was adopted, so now that we're at it, we can talk about J I A. Are we good with rescinding J I A?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So um, it's official, let's rescind J I A now that we know J I C. Let's get everything we needed to have, okay.
So then J I C dash E, where am I in my notes here?
I have J I C A.
Mm-hmm.
No. Are you doing something before J I C A?
So in my notes, I have, oh. I've uh, J I C dash E, which is again um a quote from regulations that should go.
Okay. So that's in our packet. It's not, there's no notes about it, but it is, yeah, it's in our packet, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So rescind J I C dash E, okay. So the student dress code we updated.
Student dress code was already updated very recently. So.
After our
There.
Very thorough training by M A S C that said, got it. For First Amendment reasons.
Correct.
Um, so J I C B is another one you might, we might want to put aside. Um, because J Q is going to cover the topic, I think.
Okay.
In a better way.
So we'll put J I C.
Actually, we already discussed J Q, right? We would have discussed J Q last time. Because it, we went to the end.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right, yeah, so we would have come up with J Q already.
Yeah. So let me just uh.
I don't have it with me.
I don't have that with me either.
Bring it up real quick, too.
Okay.
Helps. I know, trying to get, this was a lot of.
It was a lot, yeah, no, I appreciate your your effort here. It's a lot of work.
J Q is student fees, fines, and charges.
Okay. And our thought was to keep J Q?
Our thought, well, let me look in my notes here.
I I think we we have something that talks about students requiring to replace objects that they damage in one of those policies. I don't know if it was J Q, but I remember this discussion distinctly.
Yep.
Which means we could rescind J I C B.
Yeah.
That, yeah, and actually, that might be the one that came up with Charlie, let me just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I believe when I talked with Charlie, he was talking about in a a policy particularly about electronic devices.
Use of it, yeah, okay.
That um, he, I think he and his team are looking at right now to.
Uh, he sent us something, that a draft of it, um, yeah.
Okay, J I C J?
Uh, no, no, I I want to say it was J M.
Is.
That's, yeah, sorry.
That's a little bit different.
That's a little bit different.
But I think J I C B is um, it's covered other places.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's remove J I C B, right, okay. Thank you.
Just want to look at J Q one more time.
So next one is J I C C, student conduct on buses, school buses.
So we looked at that um we looked at that in section E.
I remember this.
I do remember this.
So um, and made a decision in section E. So we could just leave it in E, or we could double code it, but we've already decided what the policy is going to say.
Okay.
So we should just make sure they match if you want it double coded.
Okay, um, I mean, I know see no sense in double coding it if E covers it.
Me too.
Oh, Deputy Superintendent Corrus, yeah, go ahead, no, no, don't apologize. No, that's why you're here, thank you.
The reason why I'm saying it, because it, I understand it's in the other section, but there is conduct and discipline kind of highlighted here, and it's part of, this is like the section that we grabbed from our student.
Why it's double coded, because it fits in two places.
Fits in two places, yeah.
Yeah, and so I just, it provides clarity to students, families.
Okay.
And
Okay.
The administrators.
Okay.
About the expected conduct.
So then let's just take that E and double code it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So get rid of this one, take that one and double code it.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
So policy E E A E C is also going to be found under J I C C.
Correct.
Correct.
And then J I C C dash R.
Yeah.
We did make the decision when we talked about section E to um take that out, since it was procedure.
Yeah, much of it's procedure, right. So remove J I C C dash R, okay. Okay, so that brings us to J I C E.
Yes.
Student publications.
Two versions, the LIN version and the M A S C version. The LIN, the M A S C version strictly talks about student publications that are done as part of an extracurricular activity or a class or something like that. The ME, the LIN version seems to go beyond that, as like a, an independent student publication.
Yeah.
So I don't, I kind of feel like the M A S C version is the way you want to go, but. So I don't, I kind of feel like the M A S C version is the way you want to go, but you can.
Yeah, I wrote in my notes that I agree with that. I don't know if, um, remember Magnolia wanted to add anything?
I wanted to s, to put them together. And the reason I wanted to put them together is that I thought that it was useful to say, if this is a publication that is sort of part of the school, these are the things. But as somebody who spent my young years writing many zines and handing them out to my friends in school, I would think that, you know, such things are coming back again. It might be useful to have a policy for things that kids do on their own, in terms of what happens to those materials or the rules or regulations around them within the school. But I, I would defer to deputy superintendents if they think that the only policy needed is one governing school pol, uh, school publications. Or if, I, I mean, that was the reason I thought we should put them together. Was just my own youthful errant nature.
Guys have any thoughts on that one?
I'm just reading through it.
Yeah, of course. So, remember, Magnolia, when you say put them together, just kind of splice the two.
So, I would take the M A S C, that would go first.
Okay.
And then there would be the subheading. So distribution of literature, right? That's regulated by the principal, and then freedom to publish would be underneath of it.
I can agree to that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah. But it does make sense, yeah.
Yep. Especially now with social media as a publishing platform.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah. Um, and I didn't think we needed the school publications part, because that is kind of covered a little bit in the M A S C version. So it would really just have the freedom to publish be underneath distribution of literature.
Okay.
Easy enough?
Alright.
Did you get that, Mary?
Yes.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Thank you. My, my youthful waywardness would have been supported in many ways.
Younger Magnolia, thank you.
And so, um, J I C F, the gang activity in secret societies. The only difference between the two versions is updating the pronouns.
So I would say keep the Lynn and update the pronouns.
Correct. I agree.
And J I C F A, prohibition of hazing. I felt like the M A S C version, um, did a better job of clearly defining where hazing is not permitted and the actions that, uh, were to be taken.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I would take the M A S C version. I would recommend the M A S C version.
I agree. I think especially in today's.
Yeah.
Environment, having a more clear version of that, of hazing and the definitions and where should not be happening is very important. So, M A S C version. Remember, Magnolia, you good?
I, I agree. Plus, there's like a weird typo in the Lynn version.
There is.
We don't have to get rid of it.
Right. Talk about it if you get rid of it.
So in the exception that proves the rule, in the M A S C version, we actually do have, um, dash E, which is quotes from the law.
I saw that.
It's quotes from the hazing law that specifically relate to schools. Um, most districts choose to keep it in. Um, so, up to you.
So, just, I was so curious here about why we are taking out policies that are just quotes from the law everywhere throughout the policy manual. And then here, we want to have a policy that's just quotes from the law.
I, 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 I can't really answer the question because it's been that way since before I joined M A S C and it's consistently been that way. Um, but I, I, in some senses, I think it's just, the hazing law is not a chapter 71 law.
No.
It's, it comes from another section of the law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but there are parts of the hazing law that do specifically talk about schools and hazing in schools. So I think that, that the rationale is that because of that difference, um, you want to have that reflected in your manual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I agree. I, I think as I stated earlier, I think it's really important, especially again in today's environment and climate that we have, we're very clear about that. So, okay, so we're keeping the hazing exhibit J I C F A dash E, or adding the M A S C.
We're adding, yeah, we're adding it.
Into ours. Correct.
So Lynn did have, does have dash R, which is the DESI regulations around hazing. So, I mean, I suppose you could say, we'll just keep the regulations, or we'll just keep the law, or we'll keep both, or?
I would keep both.
I would keep both. Yeah. Yeah, I would keep both.
This is, yeah.
I think so. Yeah, this is, this is big right now. Yeah, yeah, this is.
Yep.
Be very clear about our expectations there, so.
Catch up with myself here.
That's okay.
Um, so J I C F B bullying prevention is another one that was recently updated by the school committee, so.
Okay.
I would think.
October 2020, yep.
In place.
So leave that there and leave it alone. Okay. J I C F B bullying prevention, just so I'm, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
So J I C G, smoking by student. The Lynn version is, I'm trying to catch up to myself here. So Lynn has smoking by students and drug and alcohol and substance abuse. So J I C G and say, J I C H. Um, M A S C combined them into just J I C H. All the way through Lynn, J I C H. And it does, it, it has, for the smoking part, um, to me, it has a better definition of the different products that would be included. It's not just smoking, it's tobacco use.
Yep.
Um, and I know that particularly in recent years, superintendents, um, have very much appreciated the fact that it has the vapor slash e-cigarettes because it says, no, you can't vape. It's right in our policy.
Yeah, that's right in our policy. Right.
Um, and the other thing that's in the M A S C policy that's not in the Lynn policy is the verbal screening.
Okay.
So, my tendency would be to say, also that J I C H in Lynn's has a whole lot of, uh, sort of procedure.
Correct. Teacher responsibilities, administrators' responsibilities. Yep, yep.
So I, um, I think I would suggest leaning towards the M A S C J I C H.
Okay. I want a minute to kind of.
Yeah, just.
Catch up. That was a lot. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the thought would be to keep the, remove, again, just so I'm being clear. Remove J I C G, um, and just add J I C H, the M A S C version. Cause all, everything we needed to cover is there.
Yeah. The other thing about, um, J I C, that Lynn version of J I C G, this is actually more information in J I C about the disciplinary ramifications.
Yeah.
So we're leaning towards M A S C J I C H.
Seems like that's the way we're leaning. Um.
I'd love that. I think the union won't do it.
Deputy, do you guys want to add anything to that? I mean, again, this is your.
Um, I appreciate.
Your life and your staff's lives, yeah.
The, um, I appreciate the J I C H version from mask that, because it is very clear about tobacco products and e-cigarettes and vaping.
I agree. Okay.
So that one's, it's really important for us to have that in policy.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Alright. So it sounds like, yeah, let's eliminate J I C G, because it's covered in the M A S C version of J I C H, and I dropped that.
So I just have a quick question to make sure. We, do we have the verbal screening in place? That is in the M A S C version?
I actually don't know.
So I believe that Elliot does the screening? He mailed from S E L about it.
Nurses don't? I think we need to check, just to be sure.
Alright.
Do you want to put in a hold?
So why don't we put a hold on that? Okay.
So we'll eliminate J I C G, but we'll put a hold on adopting the M A S C version.
Agreed.
Until we confirm that there is a verbal screening procedure in place.
Correct.
Or verbal screening mechanism in place.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that how the, is that what Desi approves?
Desi approves.
Desi would approve that one.
Why not?
Um, okay. So, Mrs. Jules, you have that?
I do.
Alright, so we're gonna get rid of J I C G, and we're gonna put a hold on J I C H to make sure that we're actually doing those things. So the verbal screening. Okay.
So, uh, J I C H dash R, the assistance plan, looks like procedure to me. The takeout?
Yeah, I agree. This is just what to do if you catch a student with these things. So, yeah. Okay with that?
Where are we?
Yeah, I know.
So that, oh, no, that's okay. That's why I stopped. Uh, J I C H dash R.
Okay.
Oh.
So that, the thought is that this is procedure, um, not policy. I don't know if you guys want to take a look at that before we.
No, I agree.
Officially eliminate it. Okay.
Yeah.
Good with it? Okay. So eliminate J I C H dash R. Alright.
So, um, J I C I, dangerous weapons in the schools. So I look, when I looked up the legal reference, um, it looked to me like the legal reference had been repealed. So I think it was maybe originally a quote from the law, but it's no longer an accurate quote. Um, and then the due process part, I really felt like J I C or the, um, that J I C actually covered the due process better than this. And you also have in your, um, is it J B A? That's the, um, discipline policy, also pretty thoroughly covers this.
Pretty clear in there, too.
So I don't think you need this. I think you've got it covered other places.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, I would.
Remove.
Eliminate.
Remove that. Okay. So remove J I C I. Okay.
Now we are at J I C J.
Now you're at J I C J.
This is the only guy that's updated version. Okay.
Now this, J I C J, which I, um, this was originally, this, the electronic device was embedded in the dress code. And when you revised the dress code, you took out and made it a separate policy.
Mm-hmm.
So I think you're set. I think I just, I didn't have it in my big thing.
No, that's okay.
Which is why I brought it and passed it out.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I do remember Charlie going over that with us. So, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
So keep J I C J. Okay.
And you remember I said way back at the beginning, J B A B we were gonna hit when we got to J I C K?
When we got to J I C K.
Here we are.
Here we are. Okay.
Um, so J B A, which covers, uh, where is J B A? Um, I think this.
Title IX.
Yeah.
That's all the Title IX things.
Title IX, harassment, sexual harassment. I think it's all covered in that policy and you don't need J I C K.
I agree.
Yes.
I do. Yeah, now that I'm looking at both, yeah. I agree. So eliminate J I C K?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then this, uh, J I C K dash E is entitled procedures, so it is procedures.
It is.
It's funny how that works.
Procedures for something we just eliminated, so. Are we okay with getting rid of that? J I C, J I C K dash E. Okay.
Yes.
Again, I always like to kind of, like, so where would something like that appear if it's a, cause it is an important one. So where would, would that be in a student handbook?
Student handbook.
Okay, that would be student, living student handbook. Okay.
And staff handbook.
And staff handbook.
And staff, yeah.
Alright.
It's part of the staff treaty.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, um, J I E, pregnant students. I just felt like the M A S C policy had, was more updated than the, um, than the Lynn version. The M A S C version talks about, um, uh, stu, uh, mixed up here.
Well, we've got two.
Pregnant and parenting students, present, yeah. Yeah, you have two.
We have two Lynn's and then one M A S C.
Right. That's why I was getting mixed up as I started talking.
It looks like both the Lynn ones were approved May fourteenth, oh nine, as well. Which is a little strange.
I, I, I like the M A S C one.
Yeah.
Because the M A S C one says, who may, who may become pregnant and/or take on parenting responsibilities. And I think that that's a really key distinction, rather than the girl and the student.
Yep.
As this, and the Lynn ones say.
Agreed. Agreed.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of why I thought that the M A S C one was more updated.
Yes. I, I agree.
Okay. So adopt the J I E, M A S C version. Alright.
And that means striking the two J I Es.
So striking the two Lynn J I Es. Correct.
Um, so J I H is one, I believe you just looked at.
Yeah.
You just did it.
We really did.
So.
So we're gonna leave J I H alone, and then that brings us to J I I.
Yep. So the intent of J I I is really to cover non-discipline complaints and grievances. Like, you know, the students coming and say, we really think that we'd like you to revise the dress code. We'd like you to look at your electronic device policy and cell phone use or whatever. So, um, just to sort of say, cause we think of, you know, sort of it covering, you think about grievances and chain of command and discipline issues. The two policies differ somewhat in content, and I think the direction that you decide to go in is, is up to you.
Okay. I wrote a note, go M A S C. I just don't remember why I wrote that note. Let me take a look.
I think M A S C one kind of differentiate, is clear in saying, this, this isn't the policy about discipline.
Yeah, yeah. That's most likely why I liked it. Yeah, I think it is a little clearer about that. Remember, Magnolia, it looks like you want to.
Yeah, there's just one sentence from the Lynn that I liked, that I wanted to stick in the second paragraph.
Sure.
And that is, "Details of the procedure should be made known to students and staff, and students who wish to use them should be assured of access to the appropriate personnel within a reasonable period of time."
Okay.
And the reason I liked that is because I think often we hear from students that they don't know how to do things. And I think it's good to codify that in a policy.
Yeah.
So, this is. I do, okay. So the second paragraph in M A S C would say, "Students and their parents and/or guardians who believe that a student has received unfair treatment may bring forward their grievance through the appropriate channels." Then that sentence would be added. So it would then say, "Details of these procedures should be made known to students and staff, and students who wish to use them should be assured of access to the appropriate personnel within a reasonable period of time." And then it will continue, "Appeals of disciplinary cases will be required to follow the district's policy on student discipline."
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I like that. I think that's actually really important to have there. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Any deputy superintendents?
No, I don't think it's, um, so if it's in that paragraph, it really, um, the information is restricted to discipline policies. Did you want to make sure that if they had a, like, I think you should change the dress code, but I don't know who to talk to about it. You know what I mean?
I do. Yeah, I think that's a valid point as well.
Yeah, but i- if it's in complaints and grievances, why wouldn't it be about? why wouldn't it be about anything, right? If the dress code policy, so someone gets-
Yeah, but except that the first, this first sentence in the paragraph says, "A student receiving unfair treatment."
May bring forward their grievance, yeah, because I'm assuming if they wanna take on the dress code policy, it's because they're feeling that the dress-
They're being treated unfairly.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I'm not saying there won't be like a fifteen-year-old Norma Rae who just wants to fight injustice for injustice's sake, but I think most likely, students have something happen to them, and then they decide they want to take action.
Yep, okay.
Well, I, I think a really good example would be when we looked at the dress code. That came from a student who felt that it was unfair.
Yes.
Yep.
You know, "I went to a," I forget how that whole thing happened, but I believe I went to a student government meeting and
Yep.
we kinda went from there, yeah, so. Yes, you were there, right.
Got it. Um, so, J J I dash R dash one looks to me like procedure.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
So, how it goes.
Alright, so remove J I I dash R dash one, okay.
And dash R dash two looks like a quote from the law.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep, just a quote from Title IX, looks like, right. So remove J I I dash R dash two. Okay. Now that brings us to the J J policies that we've already
Right.
taken a look at. Alright, so we can kinda-
So then we can skip to-
Skip through those.
And last time, if you remember, I said, "Can we set aside the ones that start J K?"
J K, right.
Kind of then jump to the end.
Right.
And I did have, um, a discussion with Attorney Gallo about the J K policies
Okay.
as well, so some of what I'm saying is reflective of our conversation.
Okay, great.
Um, so J K student conduct, it again felt like this was all covered in J I C. So this could, J K can be deleted.
Okay. Is everybody with us here? Okay. So you, uh, deputies, are you guys okay with that? J K being removed? Again, this is, uh, it directly affects you guys, so I wanna make sure we're-
But it is covered in-
It's covered in-
But it is covered in J I C, okay, good.
So J K A, M A S C used to have a policy on corporal punishment, which was about two sentences long. It said corporal punishment is against the law. So. So we, um, recently, when we went through and looked at our J K A A, physical restraint of students, we added the, the prohibition of corporal punishment to that policy
Okay.
and having the one-sentence policy.
Okay.
Um, so I, it, and then when I was talking with Attorney Gallo, he was fine with J K A, your version going away as long as, um, it was reflected and you took M A S C's J K A A.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does.
So we're keeping Lynn J K A?
No.
Nope.
No, rescinding.
Uh, we're-
Eliminating Lynn's J K A.
Well, as long as we-
Corporal punishment is referred to in J K A A.
But only if we adopt the M A S C version of J K A A and get rid of the Lynn version of J K A A.
Okay.
So, and the J K A A, the, um, the M A S C version stays more at the policy level
Okay.
and charges the superintendent with making sure there are procedures, rather than folding all the procedures into the policy.
Okay.
And as someone who went to school in the South and was subject to corporal punishment, I think that's a good idea.
Probably tell people it's illegal.
Not a right.
Okay, so, just again, so we're all on the same page here. We're removing J K A, the Lynn version, and we're adopting J K A A, M A S C version.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Alright.
Um, then J K B slash J K D, the content of this is now covered in J I C.
That's in J I C now, right? So detention's and suspension is all in J I C, okay.
Um, the same with J K E expulsion, it's now in J I C.
Now, that now lives in J I C, right?
Yep.
Okay. So eliminate J K E.
And in talking with, um, Charlie Gallo, we both felt like the discipline of pupil, uh, uh, J K F, Discipline of Pupils with Seven Sixty-Six IEP Special Needs, was also covered in other policies and is not necessary to keep as a standalone policy.
So eliminate J K F. Okay.
And J K G, I believe is a policy where the decision had already been made to rescind it.
Team attack, okay.
This seems overly complicated.
Hmm.
As an outsider, I'm still not sure what a team attack is.
I'm not quite sure either.
Yeah, that's what I mean by overly complicated.
Go ahead, Superintendent, of course.
I think this is more along the lines of hazing.
I, I agree, that's as I was looking at it, because it's almost like
I mean, I think this is pre the word hazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is what was used before.
Correct, yeah.
I think that's-
Do you, are you okay with us rescinding it?
Yes.
You okay with that? Okay.
I think we have the right language in process.
I do, I think in our hazing policies, we got that covered, so. Okay, so remove J K G, alright.
And I believe that brings us to the end of the J's that we have not already talked about previously.
That brings us back around, um, to where we started initially, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So this is all the rest of the J's that we already did.
Right. So, that brings me to J M. Um, I don't know if everybody got the email from Attorney Gallo. I'm gonna pull mine up now. Um, where he, we might wanna hold off on this, in case not everybody got it, but it was about the student awards and scholarships. So I think either our last meeting or the meeting prior to that, we had tabled that one, um.
Yes.
And he came back with a version that he feels is appropriate. I don't know if you guys got that, would you, would you rather wait until we make sure we all have that?
I have a copy.
Um, he sent that.
Yeah, I can see it.
He sent it yesterday.
I think so.
See who's on it.
Want me to make a copy?
Dorothy, Lauren.
I think if you make copies, we can.
I know, I've seen it.
Oh, yeah, you know what, you know what.
I'm not online with my computer, but I know.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I, I read my emails very carefully.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I wasn't saying it, I was just making sure you're not gonna bananas.
Yeah, I am not going banana.
Okay.
I am a little overworked and underpaid, but not bananas.
Okay, so we can all take a look at J M, and then we'll make a decision there. Thank you, Attorney Gallo, if you're watching, I'm sure you are. On the edge of your seat, he is really helpful with all this stuff, so.
Yeah, he is extremely helpful.
Instrumental, actually, one could say.
He's still in-
He might even still be in his office, yes.
He's just doing his training.
Yeah. Thank you. There you are.
Thank you.
So this would, uh, replace our current J M. Um, and it just, again, just so everyone's aware, it just kinda refers to our scholarship process and how that goes about for our seniors and those wishing to, um, go on to the next level of schooling.
So the question that we had the last time was about whether, say, you know, John Jacob Jingleheimer Schmidt could offer a scholarship to a Lynn public school student that was in no way, shape, or form handled through the schools at all.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, you know, if it's only for other John Jacob Jingleheimer Schmitz, right? And so they just look through the phone book, assuming there is such a thing as a phone book anymore, and just pick out the other, you know, people, but never go through the school.
Mm-hmm.
This policy doesn't seem to prohibit that.
Mm-hmm.
It just says-
This is speaking, in my opinion, this is speaking to that every student has access.
That's what I was about to say, yeah, so the new version.
Scholarships. It, so to your point, it doesn't speak to, can anyone ha- uh, offer a scholarship?
Well, that was, I think, the thing about the last one, is that the last policy basically required anyone who wanted to award a scholarship to any Lynn student had to go through the superintendent's office, et cetera. For approval, right? Or the school committee for approval, that's right.
Committee for approval.
Um, so this just, I mean, I, I understand what Attorney Gallo's doing, but with the passive voice, it's kind of hard, because it says, "Information about any known student awards or scholarship must be available to all students who may be eligible." But there's no responsibility on the aworder of the scholarship to make that scholarship known via the high school. So that's, that's the only part that I have questions about.
So you're saying, I just wanna make sure I understand. So you're saying that anyone in the community who wanted to provide a scholarship, if we didn't have a policy that said it needed to be approved and offered to all students, that they could pick and choose? It could be, "I only wanna give it to Lynn English High School to female students."
Redheads who are under five feet tall, exactly. So they could pick every single category in here that is protected by law and still give out scholarships based on things that we wouldn't agree with. So this is the difference between our old policy, which basically said, "If you're gonna give a scholarship to a Lynn student, it has to be vetted for these things." And this policy is saying, is not saying that anymore.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just want it to be known, I'm Portuguese, not Italian. My husband is Italian. Portuguese. Um, the Italian Men's Club, and, not in Lynn, in another community, offers a scholarship obviously for Italian students, like that, like they choose.
Yeah.
That would, if we had a general pol-, I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yeah.
If we had a policy that requires the approval and that was what they were proposing, would that not meet what we're saying?
Well, it would, because this is eligible students, right?
And so long as it goes to all high schools.
Exactly, so like, you can have a women in STEM
Right.
scholarship, right? That is, the, the students who are eligible for that are students assigned female at birth, or students who identify as women, right? Like, that's the thing. I think, I, I'm just saying, what's missing from this policy that we had in our original was the requirement that the offerers of the scholarship
Needed to be approved.
Needed to go through the schools, right? And so, um, I liked that part of it, because what often happens, and I, I see this with my own students with scholarship, is access to the information is really the issue more than anything.
It is.
And so if the community is sort of put on notice that our policy says, "If you want to give a Lynn student a scholarship, you need to submit the information on that scholarship to the whoever." School committee, superintendent, I don't care, but this does not have that anymore. It just basically says that the pub-, the information about the scholarships has to be published.
I'm just trying to think, I, I totally get your point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just trying to think how you can enforce that.
And then my only thought would be, um, having gone through this last year with my own son at Classical, I know there's scholarships that are available, like, just to classical kids from the Alumni Association, so I don't know if you're saying, like, those need to be opened up now to English as well?
No, because that's eligibility again, right? So-
Cause it's specific to classical.
Classic, yeah, so there's nothing wrong with eligibility. It's more about what I'd call the publication mechanism. The old policy put the community on notice, right? You wanna give our students scholarships, go through the, and it was untenable, because it was a school committee, but, you know, there was a point person in it to say, "Okay, yes, we are not requiring you to do, like that famous James Baldwin story, Battle Royale, in order to achieve this, because that is illegal," right? Um, so instead, by saying, "We just have to publish the information," then there's nothing for the community to say, "Please send us the information on your scholarship." So like, say a little church wants to do a scholarship for one of its members, right? It just does that. This policy wouldn't say, like, if we found out about it, we wouldn't say, "Hey, do you wanna, you know, publish your, your scholarship to this?" Because, you know, maybe there was like a member of the church who hadn't gone in a while and could still apply it, because they would still meet the eligibility requirements. Maybe they didn't hear about it at church, but they're a member of that church.
Something to think about, for sure. Um. Yeah, so it sounds like maybe we wanna just take another look at this. Should we table J M, or without the proper wording there?
Cause I would, I, I would think that Dr. Alvarez should have, um, input on this
Yeah, agreed.
and decide on if there, if we do add that, who is that point person?
Exactly, yeah.
Is it the superintendent
Yeah.
that it goes to? Is it the principal? Is it the school committee? Like, who, who would it be?
Yeah, I, I think I would want two things to be added. The first is the responsible person. Um, but also a kind of encouragement from the community to have as wide an eligibility criteria, right? Because it's, as a policy, right? The Lynn School District urges all scholarships to be available to as many students as possible, or something like that.
Mm-hmm. So, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong here. I think what, what happens now is the seniors go through guidance essentially, correct?
Yeah, guidance.
Guidance has that information for them, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
For those that make it to the guidance office.
Yeah. Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So I think there's merit in ensuring that the information is widely distributed.
Correct.
Um, but I hear that the real, um, purpose of J M was, what is the approval? Who approves the scholarship?
Exactly.
For distribution?
Yeah.
Or for application?
Okay.
And so, we wanna know who that would be, and then also, how do we also encourage in this policy for contributors to have a wider eligibility process?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I guess it sounds like we're gonna table J M until we can get a little clarity on those things. Okay.
And I do wanna thank Attorney Gallo for his work. This is in no way, shape, or form meant to say this is-
Yeah, that's still, the, the language that's there is good and will stay. It's a matter of adding.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. And I believe, I think that was all on our agenda tonight. I don't, Ms. Presser, did you wanna?
One minute left.
Yeah, alright.
I was looking at that. Holy moly!
Hard time there.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
On these policies, that the ones that are tabled, because there's a couple that were tabled also from the last meeting.
Correct. Correct.
What's the process that you would want, or like, expecting?
Yeah, so I think what I'm expecting is that when something's tabled like this, um, I'm trying to think of, like, the athletic stuff from the last time, um, that a team would, I think, where we left it the last time, a team was going to be put together that consisted of the athletic directors, so I think
That's in process.
just creating an appropriate team to kind of look at things, and then coming back to the subcommittee with that information. Does that make sense?
So, once we have a draft of, um, the feedback from both the athletic directors, and I believe principals,
Mm-hmm.
do we just schedule that with Mary to schedule the policy committee?
Yeah, absolutely, and then we can schedule a policy committee. I think something like tonight, we just had so much to get through, you know, it's on a separate night, but something like what we're talking about, what we tabled, like, if it's just an individual policy that we tabled, we could probably get through that prior to a committee of the whole, if that makes sense, yeah, yeah, okay.
Just make sure I know what you do.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Make sure Dorothy's in the loop as well, absolutely, okay. So, seeing no further business?
Um, should we schedule our next meeting, where are we with a policy manual if we need another big meeting like this?
Okay.
Because we should do it.
Yeah.
I'm just looking.
Before we adjourn.
Before we adjourn, correct, thank you, yes.
I think, um, I, I believe that we skipped over section G, which is personnel.
I believe we did, yeah.
And that, that's A, B, C, D, E, F, N, O, G, H, I, J, K, L, I think that's the last section to review.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have any sense of when that will be ready, the personnel one?
It can be ready, I mean, I can, I can work on getting it ready for you to review.
Okay.
That's, that's my job to do.
So, we can hope that the new person stepped into that position, we wanted to give her some time to.
Yeah.
To kind of go through everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so why don't we look at some dates in October?
Like, late October, maybe?
So. Does early November? So, let me.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm going to be away for two weeks starting tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, and I need, obviously, the time to then do the work before we meet.
Yes, no, I think after November seventh would be awesome for me. Just theoretically.
Could be new people.
(laughing).
Might not be us.
It could be our swan song, finishing the policy manual.
November ninth is my anniversary, if you're watching, Christine and I remembered.
Axon that day.
Yeah. That's a Thursday, anyway, I think, do we have a meeting?
We do on the, on the ninth, yes.
Hopefully. Um, how's the?
Yeah, we'll be here through February.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we have, yeah, that's right, it doesn't end November seventh, no, all right.
There's no guillotine, this is not the French Revolution.
Well, in towns, there is a guillotine. Take office immediately.
Yeah, you do, yeah, yeah.
Smaller towns.
In smaller towns, yeah, Denver's where I teach, it's, yeah, they're immediate, the next day. Um, so, let's see, Tuesday the fourteenth? Is that good for people?
I can do that.
Tuesday the fourteenth, okay.
At four thirty also?
Uh, I'm fine with that, yeah, yeah, that's okay with me.
Yep.
Okay, everyone good with that, Tuesday the fourteenth at four thirty, okay.
I'm going to ambitiously put us until six again, because we just move so quickly.
Me too.
Okay.
Prepared.
It is really helpful when you guys have looked at it, made your decision.
We're not looking at it as we go over it, yeah, I did spend some time.
As did I with my cat post-it notes.
My wife loved this big style papers on the kitchen table, she was thrilled, yeah.
So, anyway. I, I'd like to move to adjourn, please.
Okay, uh, there's been a motion to adjourn, second.
Member Dugan.
Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia? Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody. Efficient as always.
What you have to do is make it nice and neat, and then.
I, well, see, I mean, you watch me at these meetings, isn't it?